Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing on the Committee on Contracts. At this time, we ask that you silence all cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruption throughout the hearing. If you have testimony you wish to submit for the record, you may do so via email at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning, and welcome to this hearing of New York City Council's Committee on Contracts. My name is Julie Wan, and I have the privilege of chairing this committee. While the ongoing migrant crisis is proving to be difficult for our city, we are committed to aiding the newest New Yorkers to the best of our ability. In doing so, we need to provide them with shelter, food, healthcare, schooling, legal services, and a myriad of other goods and services to make sure they can get established here on their way to self-sufficiency and a better and brighter future. Contracting is an integral part of getting those goods and services to New Yorkers in a timely manner and of quality that meets our standards and expectations. Over the past year, we have seen an influx of over 45,000 migrants, many of whom are asylum seekers, come to New York, some in transit elsewhere, and some who hope to remain here in search of a better life in New York City. We join all those committed to shelter and support these migrants, and while national politics for some southern states have created a crisis rather than an organized plan for transition, it remains our responsibility to provide the services and infrastructure to support this vulnerable population while we seek contribution from our state and federal partners. What is in our control are the contracts we award to the vendors who provide the services and infrastructure to the migrant community. The mayor's decision to develop and staff humanitarian emergency response and relief centers, or HIRCs, has been an expensive endeavor, and we want to discuss how much has been spent in the construction and operation of these sites, how vendors are being vetted and selected, what safeguards are in place to ensure high standards and avoid fraud, waste, and abuse. We want more details regarding the long-term plans for various contracts and contractors who the city has hired to help address the migrant crisis. We also want to look beyond the contractors that develop and operate the HIRCs and understand the vendor selection process for services like food, healthcare, education, legal services that these migrants so desperately need. We hear regular complaints about inadequate conditions in many of the shelters, like overcrowding, poor quality of food, limited water, while we're spending many of the million dollars on these contracts. The quality of services delivered by some of these vendors has been called into question, so we want to make sure that the city dollars are not being wasted in our efforts to support these migrants. Again, we recognize that the catalyst for this crisis is largely the result of petty national politics, but it nonetheless remains our responsibility as a city's oversight body to ensure we are protecting the city from fraud, corruption, and abuse. Today, we look forward to hearing from several representatives from the administration: New York City Emergency Management, New York City Health and Hospitals, the Department of Social Services, the Mayor's Office of Contracts, Department of Citywide Administrative Services, and the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs. And we have questions for each of them. Before we begin, I would like to take a moment to thank my committee staff: Senior Counsel Alex Polenoff, Policy Analyst Alex Yablon, and Financial Analyst Florentine Cabor, as well as Zachary Mayer and Kevin Frick from Council's Oversight and Investigations Division, and Acting Counsel Jeremy Whiteman for all their hard work on this hearing. With that, I want to thank the members of the committee who are here to witness, that will testify, and we will hear from the administration. If counsel can please read the oath.
Thank you, Chair. With us today, we have Zach Iskall from Emergency Management, Molly Park from DSS, Charles Diamond from the Mayor's Office of Contract Services, Roman Goffman from DCAS, and Tom Torsasi, I apologize, from Moya. If you could each raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions? I apologize, Dr. Long.
Our favorite doctor.
Sorry about that. You can proceed.
All right. Good morning. Good morning, Chairperson Wan and members of the Committees on Finance and Contracts. I am Zach Iskall, Commissioner of Emergency Management. First, just want to start by thanking the committee and the city council. Was very happy to see the council's initiative, Welcome NYC, and really appreciate the work that you will be doing there. I'm joined today by some of my colleagues from multiple agencies. And I just want to start by saying how proud I am to sit beside them today and to be able to represent so many members of this administration and the work that they have done to meet this unprecedented emergency and challenge. The influx of asylum seekers seeking refuge in New York City continues to be a challenging task and a great example of collaboration among city agencies. To date, over 48,000 asylum seekers have come into our system since this emergency began. Of those, over 30,000 are currently in the city's care, and of that number, over 8,000 are in HIRCs with nearly 22,000 in DSS shelters. Just to put that number in perspective, in July of last year, the DSS census was roughly at 48,000. There have been a total of eight HIRCs that have been opened, with seven currently in operation, as the one on Randall's Island stands closed, and our incredible partners at DSS have opened an astonishing 92 shelters since August. To put that number in perspective, on average, it takes two years to open up a shelter. They have opened 92 since last August. As we face this humanitarian crisis, we have not wavered in our commitment to help and support. It was quickly clear to us that one agency alone would not be able to tackle this unprecedented emergency. And that is why this has been, from day one, a whole-of-government approach from the Adams Administration. We're many agencies who are operating as one team. We're all in this together. And that is why you see us together time and again when we speak about the city's response to this unprecedented emergency. At council hearings, at public-facing events, on weekly calls with elected officials, we work not as individual agencies but together, as one team, using all of our resources, all of our expertise, all of our institutional knowledge, all of our technical and contracting and costing capabilities to get the job done. And we do it with incredible pride and honor, and we will continue doing it as long as it is necessary. To date, Emergency Management continues to coordinate between incoming buses of asylum seekers and provide logistical support to the operations of the Asylum Seeker Resource Navigation Center. The center serves as a central place for newly arrived asylum seekers to receive free and confidential help assessing important services and resources that will help them integrate and thrive in New York City. Emergency Management is also coordinating with city agency partners at the Welcome Center located at the Port Authority, which has a National Guard contingent deployed for additional support. Those arriving can receive light medical care, water, and information regarding sleeping accommodations in the event they do not have friends, family, or sponsor to lean on. New York City continues to welcome arriving asylum seekers with compassion and care and using our humanitarian emergency response and relief centers, known as HIRCs, to provide both sleeping accommodations and a range of services to those seeking assistance. Emergency Management holds one 12-month contract registered at up to $135 million with SLS Co. that provides support and site management at selected HIRCs. This contract includes wraparound services such as staffing, transportation, clothing vouchers, water, and other logistical support as needed, such as reconnection specialists, bus dispatchers, interpreters, legal assistants, and security. Additional wraparound services include translation, logistics coordination, and security at some sites. Health and hospitals and other agencies maintain additional contracts being used to assist asylum seekers. New York City is a cultural mecca enriched by its diverse population, and it's a second home to those who make the difficult decision to leave their home country in search of opportunities. It is not only our responsibility as a city to help them adjust and regain their livelihoods, but it is an important investment in the future of New York. I always say that being a Marine was one of the brightest and proudest moments and achievements in my life. And I worried when I left the Marines that I might not have the ability to ever see that sense of camaraderie, that sense of purpose, again. But working alongside this administration and this remarkable team has matched that. It's been beyond rewarding. And it's one of the times where we can look at one another and say that we are truly making a real difference in the lives of those impacted by this unprecedented emergency. So thank you for the opportunity to testify today. This panel will now take your questions.
Thank you so much. We have a lot of questions today. Most of them are focused on the contracts. Could you provide, this is a follow-up from the last hearing that we had from the council, where many of the council members are asking, what is the cost breakdown of opening and operating HIRCs? And please provide a headcount on staffing costs for HIRCs, and what is the source of funding, and what is the reimbursement process for caseworkers?
So every HIRC is different. Each HIRC is like solving, when we open them, it's like solving a three-dimensional puzzle piece. There's a lot of things that you have to count for: location, transportation, different types of services, different populations, whether it's family or single adults, different sort of things with the economic impact, et cetera. So there's no one-size-fits-all approach to the contracting around the HIRCs. In terms of the population numbers and the staff numbers, I defer to Dr. Long. And I'm not sure I really understand your question about reimbursement for caseworkers. What exactly you mean by that?
What is the current reimbursement process for the caseworkers? So how are caseworkers paid? What is the timeline? How are the contracts administered?
Okay. Do you want to?
So, a great question. So a couple of thoughts. Well, I could take the caseworkers first. So the caseworkers provide their services, which include things like speaking with families that are struggling with interpersonal dynamics, to how to get to medical appointments, a variety of things. As you know, there's no direct reimbursement for the services that caseworkers provide, but the caseworkers themselves are paid for through our staffing contracts in a similar manner to how we pay for medical services through our staffing contracts. In terms of the numbers of staff and things like that across our HIRC sites, I do just want to emphasize what Commissioner Iskall said. The HIRCs have varying staffing numbers because we provide different levels of services. So for example, at our HIRCs for families with children, we have DOE enrollment. We have vaccinations upon intake for children. Those are obviously not relevant for the HIRCs that only are helping adult families and single adult men and women. We have hundreds of staff members across our HIRC sites, and I would say overall, 1,000-plus across the sites, including our vendors. One important point, if I may, just about the staffing numbers, though, is as we provide services, including frontline staff, medical DOE enrollment through DOE staff and the vendors that we've brought on, we at every HIRC always have a supervisor that's a health and hospitals employee onsite or available 24/7 that takes full responsibility as a health and hospitals employee for all of that, for everything that goes on at the HIRCs around the clock.
I want to thank and acknowledge Councilmember Brewer, Councilmember Lee, and Councilmember Areola for joining us today. Could you give me the fiscal year for '23 to '24, the budget for the HIRCs from New York City?
So the numbers we have for today, and this comes a little bit out of the last hearing as well, I can give you the number for the amount of actual dollars spent from health and hospitals for the HIRCs through January, and that's $141 million as of the end of January of 2023. Overall, the city estimates spending $1.4 billion in FY '23 and estimates spending $2.8 billion in FY '24 on the asylum seeker crisis. Those numbers are not relegated to health and hospitals or the HIRCs, but the overall response. And that's, those are budgeted numbers.
Could DHS give us their budget for fiscal year '23 to '24?
So what we have spent through January 2023 is $313 million, but the numbers that Dr. Long cited for the overall city response include DHS.
Thank you. We've seen, I have both, I have over 20 shelters in my district administered by DHS, and I also have a HIRC in my district administered by NISIM and Department of Health and Hospitals. Can you help me understand the details on how NISIM directly or participates in coordination of agencies and service providers at the point of entry at the HIRC? Because I want to see what the difference is between DHS and the HIRC system.
And I'm sorry, can you clarify what you mean by the point of entry for a HIRC? Are you talking about the establishment of HIRCs, or are you talking about how people end up in the HIRCs?
For me, I mean, what I want to know is, when I walk into a HIRC, I'm greeted by DOE. I'm greeted by caseworkers. I'm also greeted by rooms where I can go in and get vaccinations for immunizations. Whereas at DHS, I go and they're empty, and there's no staff. For a lot of the shelter providers, it is empty, and we get complaints all the time. And for DHS, when I do see staff there, they're usually National Guard or some sort of military volunteers where they're staffing the shelters. So I want to see at a point of entry, when someone enters the HIRC, how is it that you're able to coordinate across agencies, and then DHS is not able to do the same?
I would challenge whether DHS is able to do the same. I mean, DHS is a critical partner in all of this. As I've said, they've opened up 92 emergency shelters since August. The work that they've done is truly heroic. They also have the National Guard operating at a lot of their locations. In terms of how we coordinate as a city, we have a battle rhythm of weekly calls with City Hall and the other agencies participating, both focused on capacity, focused on seating, and focusing on the daily operations of those facilities.
Could you respond in DHS?
Yes, I would very much appreciate that opportunity. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to really start by acknowledging the incredible work that has been done by DHS providers and by our frontline staff who have been working quite literally around the clock since this started. We have seen a 50% increase in the DHS shelter census since the beginning of this influx of asylum seekers. DHS, again, and our providers and frontline staff have really risen to that challenge. As Commissioner Iskall noted, we have opened 92 emergency sites since last summer. Of those 92 emergency sites, 55 of those are provider-run and 37 are DHS-run. Those will all ultimately have not-for-profits running the on-the-ground operations, but we are moving faster than any of our not-for-profit partners are able to do. So yes, we are absolutely collaborating with the National Guard. We are using agency staff working overtime. At any site, there is staff on the ground 24/7. That is going to include operational staff, security, and wherever possible, social service staff. We, across our system, and many of the, you know, we do run a very large system, and it is very important that we are serving not only the asylum seekers but also DHS clients who were in the system beforehand and those coming in in other ways. Referrals are a big piece of our process, referrals to services in the community, because it is important to us that people have continuity of care once they leave the DHS shelter system. So the staff on the ground in the shelters are doing a lot of work with clients to ensure that they are connected to, say, a medical provider in the community. That means when the family leaves or the household leaves the shelter, they are able to keep that medical care, they can have that continuity. They are not dependent on being in an emergency shelter in order to receive social services that they need. So that is a big part of our service model. Because our sites are typically smaller than the HIRCs, there is, that is another reason why we lean into the referrals instead of necessarily having it on the ground. But every site is staffed 24 hours, sites have caseworkers, there are absolutely people on the ground. And again, I really want to recognize the incredible work that has been done by our providers and our frontline staff.
I'd also just like to quickly add that the Asylum Seeker Resource Navigation Center in Midtown, services there are available to residents of both the HIRCs and the shelters, and so far, that's served over 15,000 people with case management, ed enrollment, healthcare, health insurance enrollment, et cetera.
I've had a man commit suicide in my shelter during the holidays in December because he pleaded asking for mental health services, and he was denied. Within that same shelter, I had six families asking for medical attention because they were all getting chickenpox, and they were given no medical attention until six families had to get infected, and then they were finally given medical attention to be immunized and vaccinated.
We've been working, I'm not going to comment on specific cases on the record. That would be a violation of individual and family's privacy. We've been working very closely with the Department of Health and with H&amp;H. We have been providing vaccinations onsite. Chickenpox is, and other childhood diseases are absolutely an issue for this population because vaccination policies in other countries are different. We have been bringing vaccinations onsite. We have been coordinating referrals to healthcare in order to connect people to vaccinations. We are very appreciative for the support that we've gotten from our sister agencies so that we can connect people to that medical care.
For the referrals, many of these asylum seekers have no income, and they cannot travel by themselves, and they don't always have transportation, knowledge, and literacy of English to get on a subway to travel to Manhattan to a navigation center from Queens or the Bronx or Brooklyn, Staten Island, and it is not accessible. The same person who committed suicide, his wife begged for mental health services because she walked into a room of him hanging himself with her kids, and then she was told that she had to sleep in the same room. When she had to, when she asked for mental health services, it took multiple pleas and multiple people intervening, asking that she get mental health services, and she was referred out to somewhere that she had to travel for more than an hour to get mental health services.
With all due respect, council member, I think some of the facts of that case are actually different than what you described. I would be happy to go into it off the record, but I do not believe it is appropriate to get into the specifics of a family's trauma on the official testimony. We absolutely provide people with MetroCards, and we'll provide assistance with connecting them to appointments that are off-site.
So again, my question is, why is there such a difference in HIRCs where they have these services available onsite, whereas DHS is forcing them to travel for dire services like medical attention? We have so many pregnant women onsite, we have many children onsite who need to go to schools, and they're going to schools before they get vaccinated.
First of all, children actually are not going to school before they're vaccinated. It is a requirement for the Department of Education that vaccinations be in place before students start school. So, and we worked very hard, again, coordinating with Department of Health, Department of Education, to ensure that children were vaccinated ahead of school, their enrollment in school. We are bringing services onsite in certain circumstances. The vaccinations, as I mentioned, we are working very closely with the Department of Health with the Administration for Children's Services. The provider-run sites have caseworkers and other kinds of services onsite. DHS takes the health and well-being of our clients extremely seriously. That being said, a typical DHS site is, you know, 75, 80, maybe 100 households. The HIRCs are typically, there is a lot of variation, but the HIRCs are typically substantially larger. It results, so there are different service models that lend themselves to different types of sites. And again, DHS runs a system that serves, at this point, close to 71,000 individuals. It is important, and referrals are a really important part of that entire system model because we want to make sure that we are ensuring continuity of care whether somebody is in shelter or whether they have moved to permanent housing.
Can I add on, just two points there to what Molly was saying. The first is that in the HIRCs, we do have a lot of economy of scale. So for example, at the Ro Hotel, I currently have 3,500 asylum seekers there. That's for families with children. So when we're able to bring, you know, a given vaccination team onsite, they're able to serve a much wider population of people. So we have a lot of economy of scale in terms of the number of people that we're able to help truly maximize what that team is able to do. The second point is, just backing up on the healthcare side for a moment, I think you're getting at a really important question, which is, what do these families need? And I will start by saying, they need mental health. They definitely need vaccines. It still astounds me, as a primary care doctor, that we're seeing less than half of the children from many of these countries have received lifesaving vaccines to date. The complicated reasons why, but we can and must do better in New York City. But the way that we deliver these services, you'll hear, both you've used the word continuity. It is important that we get, that we plug families, especially families with children, in the primary care as soon as possible so they can meet and have a relationship with the doctor that will deliver for them all of these services, not just an immediate vaccination upon entry. And New York City Health and Hospitals has worked very closely with DHS to build well-paved pathways to offer that to everybody staying at our DHS shelters or at our HIRCs as well. And I just wanted to make the point to agree with you that I think it is critical that as we look forward in this response, that we do look forward about how to connect people to comprehensive primary care as one of the mainstays of everything that we do for healthcare.
Yeah, that would be great, because the HIRCs, the HIRC in my district is the same size as the DHS shelters because it's just one lone hotel. So if we can deploy the model in one HIRC that way, I don't see why it couldn't be deployed in the neighboring shelters, because even if we were able to coordinate cross-agencies for DHS shelter residents who live literally across the block from that HIRC or even around the corner from that HIRC, because I have a cluster of all of my shelters where migrant refugees and asylum seekers are and the HIRC only in my black-and-brown neighborhoods next to the NICEs, and they're literally in one block radius of each other. And they're the same ones where even though they're not supposed to hypothetically go to school without vaccinations, I have principals who call me and let me know that they have had outbreaks because children were not vaccinated to the standards that they were supposed to be. And it wasn't because they didn't want to, they just simply did not have the care, and they're still getting into our school systems. Moving on, we have had multiple complaints from guidance counselors, nurses, and we have H&amp;H doctor notes talking about children who are coming to school with malnutrition, rapid weight loss, diarrhea, from issues with the food that they are consuming in the DHS shelters. Can you help me understand if there have been any attempts to utilize local vendors for services like food in the DHS shelters?
Sure. We take the health and welfare of our clients very seriously, as I've said, and that certainly includes food. So in a smallish subset of our shelters, DHS is providing the food directly through our contractors. We have three food contracts, two with MWBEs that we have added relatively recently, and one with our, one of our longer-term food contractors. In the remaining sites, the providers are the ones with, that hold the subcontracts for food. They follow a standard bidding process. They're required to get at least three bids. DHS, DSS oversees that bidding process, ensures that they have complied with all of the procurement rules, and then we are following the city's food guidelines. We have, the DHS nutritionist approves menus, and so we are closely monitoring how food is delivered. Every site in, where families with children don't have a kitchen, every site provides three meals a day, snacks, milk, formula. Every meal includes fresh fruit. We have heard allegations about the food. We have followed up in every single instance where we have had specific instances, specific allegations about concerns about food. None of those allegations have been substantiated in any kind of systematic way. There have been some instances where, for example, mealtime was shorter than it should have been, and we have worked with providers to correct that. Out of an abundance of caution, we have expanded delivery of both milk and formula deliveries because we want to make sure that everybody has the resources that they need. But again, and we are happy to follow up on any specific instances that you want to bring us. But again, we have been monitoring this very carefully, doing proactive outreach to our shelters, and have not encountered anything systemic.
Can you help explain when DHS is a direct contractor with the food vendor for a shelter and when a nonprofit subcontracts to a food vendor?
Certainly. So in the, our general DHS service model is that the operations are handled by a not-for-profit organization. That is true for our emergency sites, and it is true for our non-emergency sites. And that not-for-profit contractor is responsible for any service that is provided by a subcontractor. So that can include food delivery, security, sometimes maintenance, sometimes not maintenance, but there's sort of a range of subcontractors that the, and the not-for-profit is the prime contractor. That is our standard operating model. In this unprecedented emergency, we have had to deviate from that sometimes because we are moving so quickly. As was mentioned in the testimony, we've opened 92 emergency sites since the summer. There were weeks where there were five or six sites opened in a single week. Our not-for-profit partners are doing amazing work. We have 26 not-for-profits operating shelters. We've had not-for-profits that are brand-new to the DHS system stand up and say, "This is an emergency. I want to help. How can I be involved?" We are so incredibly grateful to them, but, and they are taking- But and and they are taking over the sites, but in some cases we've had to move, in order to meet both our legal and moral responsibility, we've had to move faster than the not-for-profits are able to. So in that case, although the not-for-profit is slated to take over the site, we are doing the operations more directly. Through staffing is handled through a combination of agency staff working overtime in the National Guard and then we are using our direct contracts. So the this to put a bow on that. The sites where we are directly providing food are typically those that opened more recently where the not-for-profit has not yet been able to take over operations. As the not-for-profit steps in, they will also provide their own food contract.
Thank you. Out of ninety-two shelters, how many of them are direct food contracts from DHS and how many are through the nonprofit provider?
I may have to get back to you on that number of the ninety-two fifty-five are provider run and thirty-seven are DHS run. But that is sort of overall operations and we will get back to you on the specific food piece.
In how much of the food that is distributed to in these shelters, HIRCs and the DHS run shelters with the nonprofit providers are prepackaged and how much of it is fresh or hot?
I can start with the DHS answer. So there is variation because we have at this, I think it's about a dozen different contractors that are through not-for-profits that are are providing food, but it is typically a hot dinner. Lunch is typically cold meal packaged. Breakfast is a mix. There is fresh fruit at every meal. There is milk at every meal available for children. So there is some variation, but it is it's a mix.
And for the HIRCs, all of our meals are prepared fresh the same day. Every dinner is a hot meal. With breakfast, we give people takeaway sandwiches if they wish to, so they don't have to worry about coming back to the HIRC that they're staying at for lunch if they're doing something else during the day that's taking them away from the the HIRC where they're staying.
I know for DHS, the vendors may be different because of the subcontracting, but we've noticed that for DHS direct contracting with a food vendor is predominantly with Regina's caterers, which are all frozen meals for all three.
DHS does not have a direct contract with Regina.
You don't have a contract with Regina's caterers?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess I've been getting misinformation from my nonprofit providers who are saying that those contracts are directly with DHS and not through them. So I will follow up on that, but I want to flag that all three meals are from the same provider. For and they're all frozen and I would like to know if there are requirements of procurement for DHS even with subcontractors on when the food has to be prepared before it's distributed. The way that we know that for HIRCs, it's it's produced the same day.
Happy to follow up with you offline on the specifics around Regina. We are following the city's food guidelines very carefully. Those regulate calorie content, salt, sugar, fat. And we are ensuring that there is adequate nutrition across all the meals. The actual format of the food is going to vary depending on what a particular site can accommodate.
So I want to confirm that what I'm hearing is that the standards for food procurement does not change because it's an emergency procurement. It remains the same.
Just to clarify that I'm understanding correctly, the standards for the calorie content and other nutritional guidelines, is that? Yes, correct. That does not change given the emergency.
Can you help me understand the difference in per diems for the shelters for DHS across the board amongst the ninety-two shelters, why some may get for three meals a per diem of fourteen dollars roughly a day and then down the street, another shelter will have a per diem of six dollars and thirty-three cents per day. Can you help me understand the differences?
Sure, without getting into the weeds on any particular contract, happy to do that offline if there's specific ones that you want to ask about. The way that we work on the budgeting and that we we approach this is that there is a standard model budget that lays out the the framework for the costs that we can cover within any contract. For specific line items, the providers need to get three bids. As as I mentioned, we are going to review those bids. We are going to work with them to ensure that it fits within the overall model. There and then there may be variation because we are, we're talking about a significant variation in physical footprints. And what and the way that what we can accommodate within the physical footprint. Just in general, across our shelter system, this is not specific to the emergency sites, right? But some sites cook on site, other sites have meals delivered. Sometimes it is a couple of days of food delivered at one time. Sometimes it is, you know, meal by meal delivery. There's such a significant range of how food is provided. And that is driven by both the way the provider operates and the physical constraints of the site that there does end up being variation in the per diems.
Can you help me understand why for shelters that don't have kitchens, shelters that are only providing frozen meals that have to be microwaved for all three of them, why there's such a discrepancy in the pricing of the per diems per day for three meals per person?
Again, I'm happy to dig in on specific contracts with you offline. Don't, you know, I'm not looking at exactly the same information that you're looking at. But I think there's also differences with respect to economies of scale and and where a site is located. If a site is relatively small, not physically located near other sites that the that particular vendor is serving, you're going to end up with a different kind of cost structure than you are if it's a larger site or co-located close to others, other sites also served by the same vendor where they have because the price per meal is going to be different. So happy to dig in on specifics offline.
So you're saying that there's no standardization of how food procurement is processed by DHS?
There's absolutely standardization on the overall budget model. We work very closely with individual providers and with the Office of Management and Budget to make sure that we are on the overall costs. That we are living within the framework that has been established through our model budgets. But given that each site has different kinds of physical plants, is serving different populations, the cost structure on a sixty-room site is going to be very different than a cost structure on a two-hundred-room site, right? Simply because you're dealing with it with a different different economies of scale, different different ways of providing the service. So, you know, yes, there are guidelines, but it is not cookie cutter.
Could you please share the guidelines on the follow-up so that we could read through them because everything that you just named as a requirement, for example, for location of proximity of a site to another site, all of my shelters are in cluster with each other and the provider is the same nonprofit nonprofit provider who has a subcontract with Regina's caterers. And in all three shelters, I believe that all three of them should provide the same quantity of meal and quality of meal. And because it's the same caterer, they're getting the same three frozen meals. I've I've taken photos of them in every single shelter to to make sure that I have evidence that they're the same three meals. Yet one shelter is paid more than ten dollars, so like around thirteen to fourteen dollars. The next shelter providing the same three meals to Regina's caterers is six dollars and something cents. The next one is three dollars and something cents and it makes no sense where the extra ten dollars are going to because clearly the meal only costs three dollars and something cents to produce and to distribute.
Happy to follow up with you on that those specifics, yes.
Okay, the next question that I had for food contracts as well. What is the per diem for per diem cost for the HIRC system per day per meal? Or like for three meals per day, per person?
So right now, in the HIRC system, we have two food vendors and then at Brooklyn Cruise Terminal, we have Garner that prepares the meals on site that day. It's approximately seventeen dollars per person per day. And that's the same for our two vendors.
Can you help me understand why there's such a significant budget difference for the meals between DHS and HIRCs?
I think the largest difference has to do with it that DHS is a significant system, right? Serving a wide variety of clients beyond the asylum seekers. The asylum seekers at this point represent approximately a third of our population. They are the, we have ninety-two emergency sites that are that are serving largely but not exclusively asylum seekers, but that we have a much larger footprint of four hundred plus shelters. We have precedent and infrastructure that we are building off of and that is a little bit different than when you were standing up a system that is solely emergency based. We are incredibly grateful for the work that that NISM and H and H have done to stand up the HIRCs. This, as as we have all said, is an unprecedented emergency. It put incredible strain on the DHS system, which is why the administration opted to take really this whole of government approach. But when you are doing work in a strictly emergency basis, there are often cost implications because it is it is expensive to have to stand something up from scratch.
And if I, yeah, oh, please, I'm sorry. I just, I understand the comparison that you're trying to make. And I just want to sort of caution against the comparison between between the shelters and the HIRCs. It's comparing apples to oranges and even amongst the different shelters and the different HIRCs, it's comparing apples and oranges. Emergencies are going to cost more. There's a lot of infrastructure that we have to put in place. They are distinct populations. And then there's also just, I think, when you look at this unprecedented, you know, emergency and humanitarian crisis, DHS has really risen to the occasion with ninety-two emergency shelters. It's remarkable. We're operating seven HIRCs at scale. Emergencies are also always going to cost more. That's just sort of one of the truths of emergency. And I think as the administration has made clear, the city is is at its is at the end of its resources. This is not sustainable. What we're doing at the HIRCs is not sustainable. It's why we have asked the state. It's why we've asked the federal government for support. Because these types of operations are not sustainable during this unprecedented emergency and humanitarian crisis.
I completely agree that this is unprecedented and it's not acceptable that our federal government has only provided ten million dollars. That is a drop in the bucket for how much we're expected to spend in the billions. And our state governor needs to, she can't just be our governor when it's convenient. She has to be the governor of New York City, not just Westchester, Long Island and upstate New York because she does not want to deal with the migrant crisis. So I agree with you that our state partners and our federal partners have to step up. But the way that you're describing the differences of apples and oranges is not something that we should accept as a sanctuary city. If New Yorkers, whether you have been here for five months or five weeks because you're a refugee or migrant asylum seeker, they themselves are speaking amongst themselves in chat groups saying, oh, no, 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 don't go to that DHS shelter. Try to get on this line or try to get into this HIRC. The HIRCs are so much better. You're going to get better food. You're going to get better quality care. Because the people that you're caring for in both locations are the same, we need to have a standard of care for these people. So.
I I believe that the population at the shelters, and I'm out of my lane here. If it was not for the asylum seeker crisis, correct me if I'm wrong, Molly, it would be at what forty-one thousand, forty, forty-eight thousand? It's currently sitting close to an all-time high around seventy thousand. If you want to see those changes, what I would urge is we need additional support from our state and federal partners.
Can you explain for the HIRCs and for NISM, what the nutritional and calorie requirements are that you look for for food that you're distributing in the HIRCs?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll describe that and then I want to just make one additional point to emphasize what Commissioner Skol was saying. So we use the same standards that Molly articulated, the city's healthy food standards. In addition to that, I think it is also important to recognize that the pop our population of asylum seekers has specific needs. So in light of that, another example is that our food in our HIRCs is all halal as well. We started to do that when we started to receive some West African migrants predominantly from Senegal. The additional point I wanted just to build on is that at New York City Health and Hospitals, which I know we're going to talk more about in this hearing, we had a lot of resources and a lot of existing contracts that we've used, but we've had to have new contracts for things that we didn't already have. And food is an example of this. And anytime you're doing a contract in the context of an emergency, setting up that infrastructure, which was setting it up anew for us, is going to cost more money, but there's an opportunity to drive down costs over time, which we've already done significant work in, especially if you look at food with the questions you were asking. And we plan to continue to drive down costs while maintaining quality and the state's health standards, the same as DHS over time. And we've made significant strides in that direction.
Thank you so much. It's really good to hear that you're making culturally competent food choices. Can you explain in DHS what you're doing for cultural competence in the food selections and and the menu items? Because we have folks in my district that are getting their who are crying out for culturally competent food that they are used to eating in their home countries.
Absolutely. Thank you. So we serve, as as has been mentioned at this point, over seventy thousand individuals. Those individuals come from dozens of countries, many different cultures. So it because of that, the food that we are going to serve is not going to be familiar to everybody. But absolutely, we have a process where if somebody has particular dietary needs that whether it's it's health-related or cultural, that we are able to accommodate that. So if somebody needs a halal meal, absolutely, we can accommodate that. If somebody needs a kosher meal, absolutely, we can accommodate that. Same on the health side. If they're diabetic or have other or health-related needs, we have a process for that. That process is well posted. And and onsite staff can facilitate that for any client. If you have individuals that you know of for where that process has broken down, we are absolutely happy to follow up offline.
Okay, great. I'll definitely be following up because the main requests that we get at from my shelters are for Latin American cuisine in their shelters.
So so to clarify, we can absolutely accommodate particular dietary needs around religion and and healthcare needs, right? So we can provide halal meals as as does H and H. We can provide meet particular dietary restrictions. Because we are serving a system that serves a myriad of cultures, a myriad of backgrounds, the food is not going to be familiar to every single entity and and our ability to to provide a specific cultural cuisine is going to be is going to be limited because we have so many different cultures, because we are serving a system of seventy-one thousand people.
So for shelters that have subcontracts and the shelter residency is ninety percent Latin American, Venezuelan, Colombian, because it's not a religious-based dietary preference, they're not able to receive the cultural competent food that they're seeking?
So the providers are working with their with their subcontractors. They are and are working, there is a an significant variety of food. I would, you know, point out there's a significant variety of of foods across Latin America as well. I don't want to homogenize a particular population. So the providers are working with their with their vendors and and providing food. Cultural competency is absolutely something that we prioritize. But I need to emphasize again, we are serving a system of at this point, over seventy thousand individuals and meeting everybody a range of cultural needs.
Okay, so just to confirm, the cultural competent meals are only for medical dietary restrictions and for religious dietary restrictions?
We have a process specifically where individuals and families can request specific meals that are unique to them within a facility for religion and religious reasons and healthcare reasons. And that beyond that, the providers are working with their subcontractors to to deliver meals that are popular within the site.
Yeah, I would I would ask that we would be culturally competent based on country of origin and their culture. Thank you. I'm going to pass it over to Councilmember Lee to continue questioning.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. Thanks for being here. I forgot my glasses, so if I look like I'm squinting, it's not because I'm giving you the evil eye. I just can't see. Oh, no. I'm far sighted. I can't see things far away. Sorry. So so I appreciate you all being here and I definitely can appreciate that this has been a tremendous lift, an uphill battle for all of you to set up these HIRCs. So I just wanted to applaud you on that. And you actually answered some of my questions. So I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. So when I ran DIFTA Senior Centers, for example, I think the food standards that you're talking about are the same, right? Where there's a certain calorie content and we we chose to provide fresh meals because that's what our community wanted. And so we did it in a very culturally competent way. And I think there is a difference in reimbursement and correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't know if this is the same for DHS and and DOHMH when it comes to the reimbursement prices, but I believe for folks that are providing fresh food, prepared fresh foods, it is a little higher because of the ingredients. They're more costly. But is that correct or no?
Well, I think the important point I would make there is on the HIRC side, as we've developed our food contracts, because we did them on an emergency basis, the price we start off on a day one is not the price that we're currently paying today. We've driven it down substantially and we're going to continue to do so. And I think that's a that's a fun. And I think that's a function of, you know, the fact that we had to meet the needs of the emergency, and now we're continuing to evolve.
Got it. And then the other thing that was partially answered was, you know, coming from the nonprofit sector, I know that there's a lot of great partners out there who already have contracts with both DHS and DOHMH. And so just wanted to know if you could delve a little further into how you're utilizing those nonprofits, because I know that they could also pick up a lot of the work that, you know, and it's almost like an extension of what you guys are already doing. And so, you know, folks like New York Immigration Coalition, I know, kind of stepped in right when the asylum seekers were coming. So how have you been working with the different shelters as well as the services? And I will say, as a mental health chair, I'm a little biased in this question, but there's a lot of Article 31s out there that I know could benefit from seeing more clients, right? And so how do we utilize that in a way where we can provide services at the same time as, you know, expanding their contracts, so to speak, that they have already?
I'm happy to start, and then I'll turn to Molly to add on. So I'll talk a little bit about our overall approach to mental health, and then drill down into how we get people connected into longitudinal care, and then talk a little bit about our food contracts and the way we work with community-based organizations. So mental health first, I just want to acknowledge and just to take a moment to say, mental health is really at the core of so much of what we do here. Commissioner Isco and I have spent a lot of time with our asylum seekers, and the stories, I can't think of a better way to say it than, you know, as a primary care doctor, they haunt me. You know, the trauma that people have been through is almost indescribable. But here, when they get to New York City, we have the opportunity to do so much better for them than they've received so far. So, you know, at our HIRCs, it's important from the beginning to have the staff that interact with you be culturally responsive, appropriate. So over 90% of our frontline staff are bilingual, speaking Spanish, many speak actually two, three, four languages. And then we train all of our staff in mental health or psychological first aid. To me, that's sort of the way I think about that, yeah, is it basically gives every staff eyes on our guests. Instead of having a few very specialized staff members that are intended to look, you know, cross all of our guests to see who's in crisis, every staff member can know. And every staff member can say, "Hey, what's going on?", intervene, and then we connect you to services. We do the PHQ9, the depression screening, at intake for everybody 12 and above, and for any medical visit that you have. So if you come and see us, we're going to do that. That's one of the main ways that we create the connection point, as you're saying, to longitudinal care. With the PHQ9, if your score is on the lower side, it means you do need longitudinal care, but it's not a today thing. If it's in the medium scale, then that means that you could have something serious going on, and it's important that you speak with a social worker today. That's why we have social workers onsite at our sites. So we actually walk you off and do a warm handoff with our social workers, and then connect you to longitudinal care. If you're high-risk, then you, unfortunately, we have seen cases like this, then you do need to come to the hospital. The way that we connect you to longitudinal care, the reason the PHQ is important, is that enables us to identify who has more urgent needs. We're building out now pathways to longitudinal care at our, for example, existing health and hospital sites. So I have one of my clinics, Roberto Clemente. It's my only clinic in health and hospitals where 100% of the staff are bilingual, which is great. So you walk through the door, you don't have to worry about seeing who speaks Spanish, who doesn't. Everybody speaks Spanish. And we reserve slots there so that we can plug our asylum seekers in, which would be from DHS or from our HIRCs on an as-needed basis. And then beyond that, I would just add before I turn to Molly on the behavioral health side, if you do know of Article 31 facilities that would like to take on more patients, please let us know as soon as today, because we would love to call them this afternoon to get our patients the much-needed service.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of them are strapped, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that. But in terms of the, in terms of like the contracting perspective, I'm thinking of it from that hat, you know, the expansion of services and how they can sort of help with their operational costs as well as providing services to those that need it in the city, so.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. And, well, do you want to answer the mental health side? I didn't answer your CBO question, which I'm happy to talk about if you want me to go. Okay, so I'll just finish there. So I would say, you know, from the beginning, you know, and I just have this one particular memory in mind, CBOs have been critical partners for us. And, you know, actually, it's been one of the heartwarming things for me to see CBOs who represent our communities in New York really be at the front of the line to say, "Hey, we want to help, we want to talk to you, we want to give you feedback." I remember when we were at Randall's Island, Commissioner Isco, Commissioner Castro and I invited our community-based organizations to spend some time with us to give us feedback. Turned into like a three-hour meeting, where they gave us a tremendous amount of incredible feedback that we adopted. And we were able to operationalize, I would say, probably most of it. And that really, I think, the CBOs didn't have to come out to be a part of, you know, of the day with us there, they chose to, and it really made a big difference for us. And we've maintained those relationships. And today, the way that we get a lot of our referrals into our HIRCs is through community-based organizations. They know us, they know where we are, and they'll call us and say, "Do you have availability for a family of X, for two individuals in this situation?" And we have this, a good mode of communication with them, which enables, I think, people to get to us more quickly. And so if you're coming in on a plane, for example, you may engage with a CBO as soon as at the airport, then they would be able to call us, "Is there availability here, availability here?" So I think, just to emphasize, how have we worked with CBOs, not-for-profits? I'd say they've served a pivotal role, and I look forward to continuing to work with them. And honestly, I just want to say thank you. And I'll turn to you with that, Molly.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Long. Yeah, I absolutely need to echo that CBOs have been a really critical piece of our response. We are incredibly grateful for their willingness to step up here. We have 26 different not-for-profit organizations operating the 92 emergency sites. Some of them are, you know, some of our largest and longest-term providers, some of them are organizations we've never worked with before. I will say, some of our smaller and more neighborhood-based providers have been the ones to really step up, to say, you know, we need to work at a scale that we've never worked at before because this is such an emergency. So people have really jumped into this, you know, headfirst with us, and there's no way we could be doing the work that we are doing without them. So really a critical piece. From a contract perspective, it is a mix of expanding some of the existing contracts that we have, and then we also issued what we called our Sanctuary RFP, which was specific for sites specifically serving asylum seekers. So we, of our, I have this here, sorry. The sites are a mix about, sorry. I have it somewhere, I will get back to you, but the sites are a mix of expansion of existing contracts, and then specifically for this emergency purpose. But really have to echo what Dr. Long said, that there's no way we would be doing this work without them. Sorry.
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
With respect to behavioral health, that is a significant priority for us. We really care about the well-being of our clients. I cannot provide the same level of technical expertise that Dr. Long can, but we are, all of our clients enter through one of our intake sites where there is medical screening. So for families with children, they're coming through the PATH Center, Intake Center in the Bronx. There is, the Floating Hospital is another not-for-profit, great not-for-profit partner is onsite there. We are able to do fairly brief, but brief healthcare screening there for all of the families that are entering. We also onsite have representatives to look for instances of domestic violence. We have ACS onsite, so we have, with that centralized intake, we have a variety of touchpoints where we can try and identify instances of crisis. Once a family with children is within shelter, we are, you know, monitoring on a regular basis, doing wellness checks. We are bringing agency partners onsite. I've mentioned DOHMH and ACS as being really valuable partners to provide additional services, and then referring out, we would be more than happy to work with other partners for referrals, so happy to connect with you offline on that. Single adults, when they come in, they come in through, we have a couple of different intake sites for singles, and then they go to an assessment site where they are there for typically three weeks, something like that, and there is a full medical assessment there as well, so that we can make sure that we're placing people accordingly and connecting to services.
Awesome. If I could just, one last question, Chair, sorry. So, and I think you kind of actually started going into this, but my last question I wanted to ask is, because I think, for example, one thing we saw through COVID is that in an emergency, unexpected crisis situation, there's also opportunity, right? And one of the things I know that came out of that from our side, on the social service side, is, wow, we can actually do telehealth online, and we can do a lot of things that we didn't think we could do before, or that were barriers previously, and those things were fast-tracked, right? So that clinics could be able to see clients online, right? So are there, I would have to say, and this is something similar to what Chair Wan was saying, is that, you know, it seems like the services at the HIRCs versus the shelters, because they are completely different models, right? You have contracts that were done more the previous way, and perhaps in an emergency situation, because things have to come together so quickly, there's a lot more flexibility and mobility and movement. And so I'd be curious to know through, from each of the agencies, and it's not something you necessarily have to answer today, although I'm sure you have thoughts on it, but, you know, are there things that we can take from the situation that's happening now, and then maybe backtracking it into implementing it in a way that is more streamlined and efficient with the current shelter system or other emergency systems?
Let me just start by saying how much I love your question. It really is. It's thought-provoking, and it's something that in emergency management, we think about all the time. I think that, you know, when it comes to contracting in particular, we are looking at ways that we can innovate contract crisising across the city. I think one of the other things that we've learned in this unprecedented crisis is that we really have to take a whole-of-government approach. And I think it's sort of remarkable when you think about this team. I mean, none of us had really, I mean, some of us knew each other. Most of us had not worked together before August. And we've come together as a team collectively to address this challenge as a city. And I think there's a lot of learnings in how we organize as a city, how we organize at administration, how we work together, how we support each other, that can also be applied. And then I think in the contracting piece specifically, you know, it's been amazing to me, as somebody who is new to city government, I started just over a year ago in February of last year, just seeing how we use the full arsenal of contracting capabilities to address this, whether we're looking at citywide contracts, emergency contracts, certain MWBE authorities, intergo contracts, the RFP that we put out that would love your help sharing, competitive bids, competitive sealed proposals, P cards. I mean, we really are using every tool at our disposal to address this unprecedented crisis. And I just love also that there's so much more that I think we will learn out of this, and so much more innovation that will improve the delivery of services. So thank you for the question, Dr. Long.
Yeah, actually, I'm mostly going to piggyback on what Commissioner Isco said. I love the question, too, and I think one of the big takeaways for me is the whole-of-government approach here. You know, I think it's in part because, as we think about the specific needs of our asylum seekers, they really need a variety of things that they haven't been getting where they're coming from, or they've experienced trauma such that they really do need specific mental health needs, or they have specific mental health needs right now. You know, going back to COVID, just, I was the, I am, the executive director of Test and Trace, now Test and Treat. And, you know, there, we think, we're already thinking a lot about, you know, everything that we've learned. My chief operating officer, Chris Keely, right behind me and I, started the city's mobile fleets, where we did testing, then vaccines, then test and treat. We get tested, then you walk with life-saving treatments. And we started our telehealth system, our 212 COVID-19 hotline. Those are all things that we're thinking about now, how can we make healthcare better? And it's going to be better after COVID, because of everything we've innovatively done, might I say, uniquely in New York City. With the asylum seeker crisis, I think we're going to have that same opportunity. And I think right now, we're at the stage of understanding what all the specific needs are, and the whole-of-government approach is making us very effective. I mean, DOE is onsite every day at our families with children's HIRCs, enrolling kids in school. You know, we have a variety of city agencies sitting right in front of you here that we talk, literally, we exchanged 50 emails a day. And I think that's what it's taken, that's what it takes to make New York City uniquely successful in this crisis. But, you know, aside from the whole-of-government approach, I think being uniquely successful here, I do look forward to being able to fully answer your question in the future when we have a moment to take a step back and see what was some of the, what were some of the more effective things to help improve our healthcare and other systems.
Nice. And we love to, I was actually, we were one of the Test and Trace providers, so that was an awesome program. And I love, I love the whole-of-government approach, because I got to say, as a social service provider, like, we would oftentimes be on the ground, and we have like 10 different agencies we're working with, and my frustration was, oh my gosh, why can't we all just talk to each other and get rid of the silos? And so I'm glad that you guys are seeing that and working with each other more as well, so thank you.
I can just answer the very narrow question about telehealth. DHS is actively rolling out telehealth pilots within the families with children's system. This isn't specific to asylum seekers. It is, it's something that we're doing across the board and looking at ways that we can expand on that. You know, it requires making sure that not only do we have the providers on the other end, but that we're solving for the technology aspects of it as well. So we are doing that, it's something that we think is really important. But because we also understand that individuals can't wait for a pilot to be tested, we are working very closely with DOHMH, with H and H, and others to make sure that we are getting adequate referrals to clients.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lee, and thank you so much to everyone responding to our questions. I want to acknowledge and thank Councilmember Nurse for being here. Next, we'll turn it over to Councilmember Ariola for her questions.
Thank you, Chair. So I want to say that we've come so far from our very first meeting, and I appreciate that, I really do. And I appreciate you being present at our asylum seeker meetings that are held regularly and having answers for us. The third thing I appreciate today is that there's not a lot of follow-up, because you really do have the answers. So, and we don't always get that. So, a couple of things. This was an insurmountable task, and no one could have imagined how many asylum seekers would come to our city, but you really did do the best with what you had. So, and Dr. Long, kudos to you, because, again, you know, my whole focus was on vaccinating, you know, the children to go in for their children, childhood vaccinations and such. So with the outbreaks that were spoken about, are those just the children who have not been fully vaccinated for childhood diseases? And how much at risk are our own students, our New York students, who are fully vaccinated? What are the risks to them if they are in school and two or three kids in their class get chickenpox?
Thank you for the question. You know, this is, could not be more near and dear to my heart. Can I start by giving you some statistics to show we were prepared? But this really represents just the volume of work since we last spoke. So across our HIRCs and at our Navigation Center, we've now vaccinated more than 11, administered more than 11,000 vaccines. More than 7,000 of those are among children, adolescents less than 18 years old. But that just speaks to this critical importance and unbelievable opportunity to, you know, intervene with people that have not had the opportunity to get vaccinated in their home countries. Your question was, what can drive outbreaks, like chickenpox outbreaks, things like that? And I would say that the outbreaks are driven by children that are not immune to varicell or chickenpox. Immunity can be acquired in a few different ways. If you get it, many of us, myself included, when we got it as a child, that gives us immunity, similar to a vaccine. More recently, we've developed a varicella vaccine that didn't exist when I was a child. And there actually is significant protection from one dose. So I just declared, you said fully immunized, there actually is protection after one dose alone, which is why it's even more important in my mind that as part of our, as soon as we see children coming into our sites, to immunize them. At our HIRCs, we've actually built, one of the lessons learned so far is that we used to have it so that we had vaccination teams, and then we had you come to us when your parents wanted to bring you, things like that. Now it's part of intake. What's your name? How are you doing? Here's your vaccine. Then you get your room card. So we've just ingrained it as part of how we do intake now, and that's enabled us to be very, very successful in vaccinating, you know, tremendous amount of children coming into our system. But it is, you know, I'm proud that we've done 7,000 vaccines among children, but I will say we have a heck of a lot more work to do. And I'm just glad that these children and our asylum seekers are coming to New York City where we're able to do the work, which is, we're hearing from them different than their experience elsewhere.
And the students who are fully vaccinated, and they're students, you know, New Yorkers that go to school there, they should not be at risk for any of these childhood diseases because they are already immunized against it. That's correct?
They have substantial protection from being immune predominantly in children in the US from the, already receiving the varicella vaccine, which is a requirement of DOE.
Okay. And the other thing, I'm really, I'm so happy to find out that they're going to have primary care physician access. And that, that's private primary care physician access, so are they, do they have Medicare, I'm sorry, Medicaid? Is that being given to them upon their arrival?
Yeah, so, great question. So I was smiling in part because I'm the public system, so they have, I guess, I've thought about quite this one, but public doctor access. But what I jokingly mean by that is that we're offering health and hospitals resources to as many of our asylum seekers at DHS or at our HIRCs as possible. They're going to see the same pediatricians at Bellevue, and we're trying to plug as many of them as possible, and I think we've been really successful doing that. It's part of the reason why you're hearing from Bellevue doctors, as we heard earlier. But the, our goal is to plug every child into a pediatrician, they'll be their doctor longitudinally moving forward. In terms of their insurance, what we're seeing- In terms of their insurance, what we're seeing among asylum seekers coming in is that a very substantial number of asylum seekers, both children and adults, qualify for health insurance in New York State. Now, that can mean based on their parole status that they qualify for Medicaid, or it could mean that they qualify for New York State's essential plan, typically category four. Either way, we're enrolling them in healthcare. And I believe the latest statistic, my chief operating officer will correct me if I'm wrong here, is that we at our HIRCs and Navigation Center have actually been able to enroll through Metro Plus around 8,000 asylum seekers in health insurance. I like to talk a lot about how vaccines and medical care can save your life, but I also want to say insurance can save your life too.
Exactly. I just have a couple of more questions, Chair, please. So, this for DHS. When kids, I talk about the family shelters because that's what I have in my district. So if you have a family and each child is mandated like any other child to go to school, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. So, and if they're not going to school, what is the, what type of check and balance do you have to make sure, say, well, family in room seven, two of their children are not attending school?
Sure. So, we do daily wellness checks on families. And in part of the instruction is, are kids going to school? Do we see kids in, you know, school-aged kids in the building during school hours? The provider-run site, which is the majority of our emergency sites at this point, although not all of them, the caseworkers would call the family in for a case conference, right? Talk about the importance of school, really try and encourage, find out what the barrier is, right? Is the barrier, you know, anxiety about language? Is the barrier transportation? Is it, you know, not understanding why it's important? But work through those, right? We really try and take a social service approach to solving that problem. For the sites that don't have providers onsite, because as I mentioned, we've been standing up very quickly, this is part of the training that we do with our National Guard and agency staff volunteers to flag those situations. And then we would have DHS staff doing that same kind of case conference. At the end of the day, it is ultimately parents who are responsible for making sure that their children get to school. You know, DHS is not in a position to condition shelter access or anything like that on school attendance, but it is something that we take really seriously and make sure that we are following up with the parents. You know, in the most extreme case, where we felt like there was neglect going on, we would flag that for ACS, but that's a very extreme case, and we would certainly do a lot of engagement with the family before we got to that point.
When a child does not go to school, does this, like, I'm notified if my child doesn't go to school. Who does the school notify? Is it the provider?
No, the parents.
Or the parents themselves? So, so just, I'm going to give you a situation that we're seeing outside shelters, family shelters. On school days, oftentimes the mom is on the street, baby kind of wrapped in a blanket around her back, and say, a school-aged child, between seven and eight years old, that is selling any type of product from chocolate to whatever it is on the street, and they're bobbing in and out of traffic. We've, we've worked with the provider, we've worked with the NYPD, we've worked with ACS on that. I want you to be aware of it. That's the only reason why I'm bringing it up, because this is something that's happening. And if it's happening in my district, it must be happening in districts across the city of New York. So if you find a provider that is not meeting the standard, or a subcontractor that's not meeting the standard, what's the process to then remove that provider and replace them with someone who will do the proper job?
Sure. First of all, thank you for flagging the issue, absolutely something that we will follow up on. You know, our goal in general is to have providers succeed. And this is, this is true, in this case, there's been other circumstances where I testified in front of the council about, you know, various provider questions. So when we identify a provider where we feel like they need to be focusing more on a particular issue, we will, we start with working with them. We can put them on a corrective action plan, we can, you know, embed DHS staff more closely in their operations, we will do more intensive monitoring. The way DHS is structured, we have program administrators, and then under them, program analysts. Each of them have a portfolio of shelters clustered by providers so that we have staff who really understand that what is happening with a particular provider, who can be there, who can be on the ground. So our first step is to, is to really try and work with the provider to correct whatever situation it is. We really value our not-for-profits. You know, when something goes wrong, I think, or let me be slightly softer, when something is not going exactly the way we would all like it to, it may be, you know, a lack of understanding, it may be staffing challenges on their part because we certainly know that we're all suffering with, in the current labor market. So, so we work on how we, what can we do to collectively fix the situation. If we get to a situation where a not-for-profit is ultimately not providing this quality of services that we need, nobody is too big to fail. I've been at DHS about three and a half years. We have shut down several providers because they are not providing, including some fairly large ones, because they are not living up to our standards, and we will do that. But, but that is hopefully the end, a fairly extreme end result as opposed to something that we would go to immediately.
Okay. And just, and that's because, because your staff goes out so, to see the provider, make sure things are going well. So my final question is, what is the current staffing for your agency to go out and do oversight at 92, you said, 92, 93, different locations? That's a very, that's a very big job.
Sure, yes. Absolutely. So DHS is about a 1,900-person agency. Of that, about 500, these are very approximate numbers, are DHS PD, so they're not doing the direct social service oversight. The majority of the rest of those people work in shelter operations. There are a handful of directly run sites, so actually, you know, this is outside the emergency space, but like 30th Street, for example, the Bellevue intake site is, that is, there is no onsite provider there. That is wholly run by DHS, so the numbers that are just included include our directly run sites. And then the rest of the agency is really focused largely on shelter operations.
All right. Thank you so much, and thank you for the latitude, Chair.
Thank you. And now I'll turn it over to Councilmember Brewer for questions.
Thank you, and thank you for the tours of the HIRCs. And I think I know many of your shelters. Bellevue should be shut down and torn down and start over, Molly, just FYI, at Bellevue. The first question, just in terms of food, I know that the Chair asked a lot of questions about this, but literally, can we not do just rice and chicken? I mean, why is it so complicated not to have things that are just really specific? Is that the kind of menu that you are providing? That is what people want. That's what I want. That's what people want. I mean, literally, something that's so basic, but I don't think that's what's being offered. Or maybe you, maybe I'm wrong.
So there are multiple vendors because there's, there's three vendors that have direct DHS contracts, and then somewhere in the neighborhood of about a dozen vendors that are contracted through our not-for-profit providers. So there's a variety of different meals. You know, we do, we are meeting the needs of a very wide variety of people because we are operating a system of 71,000. I've, I've heard the feedback from the council and appreciate that, and we will certainly take it back.
Okay. Can you tell us, I think you said two MWBE and one long-term. Can you tell us who the vendors are?
Yes, absolutely. My team gave me a very detailed binder here, so I am just going to flip to the right tab.
Thank you. Food is your issue. Schools are okay. I don't know, but food is your problem. I'm just saying, you know, you just, it's like school food. Go to a class, teachers are great, principal is great, food sucks. That's the same problem here. And can we get a list of the menus? I know that sounds silly, but that will, will help you solve the problem.
Sure. So the three food contractors, these are the direct DHS contractors. This does not include the, what the not-for-profits contract with. Company provider is Gertes de Hall, which covers the Bronx, one of our MWBEs. RC Stillwell LLC covers Manhattan, and then Witson's Food Service covers Brooklyn and Queens. Those are, again, those are the DHS contractors.
Could you repeat the last one for Brooklyn and Queens?
Witson's Food Service.
And Councilmember Brewer, I can answer for the HIRCs if you like to.
Sure, go ahead.
So just to emphasize one of the, the way that you phrased the question, because this is, I firmly agree with this.
Pretty direct.
You said what people want.
Yes. I'm trying. They want scratch kitchen, they want, they want to fix, they want to have the hot plate, which they can't have, and they want to cook themselves. That's the problem.
I view my job as a primary care doctor, where I'll see my patients this afternoon as giving people what they want.
I try also.
I know you do.
Go ahead.
So what we've done at the HIRCs, which has worked well so far, and we've talked about this a little bit before, but we're about to embark upon a large door-knocking campaign for it, is we've started to do surveys. So in terms of identifying what people want, no better way, as you got the information that you have, than just asking people. So at a HIRCs, we started to ask people to rate each individual meal. Some meals got low scores, some meals got high scores, I've given the example before, but I just think it's telling that from West Africa and Senegal to people coming from Venezuela, Ecuador, very few people liked roast beef, very unpopular.
Right. Chicken and rice.
So we found that there were certain menu items that actually universally people really enjoyed, and we've built our menus around that. We're continuing to evolve them. And we're planning a door-knocking campaign to refresh that too, which I'd love to share with you when it's done.
Okay. And so you'll send, somebody will send us some menus when you can from the, I guess it comes from your nutritionist?
Our nutritionist oversees the menus, yes, we can follow that.
He or she could send on that.
We're happy to as well.
Okay. Second question. I don't understand, when I go to the HIRCs, I see a lot of people at those desks. And it is true that, you know, they need to be there, but SLS Co. I think does Brooklyn, and then you've got DocGo. So I want to know what sites these companies are managing and how much has been spent, I guess of the 135 million. This DocGo guy, he just paid for millions of people, he, on his own, to fly to Ukraine and be volunteers, according to the papers today. So he's got a lot of money. So I'm just wondering, these two contracts, how much, and the people at the tables are nice, but they seem like a lot of them, right? I mean, we could, I could handle some of their stuff in pretty much five minutes. So I need to know why so many of them, and what are they doing, and maybe you don't need so many.
I think the question may be predominantly for me, though, give Molly a chance to answer in a moment. So we use a couple of different vendors for providing frontline staff. They perform functions like intake, where we do things like not only check you in, but assess, do you require a diabetic meal? Do you need a gluten-free meal? Do you, are you a person living with a disability that we can make a plan for to make sure that you are safe and comfortable your whole time staying with us? So it's a range of things. And DocGo is one of our vendors that's providing those types of services that I was just sharing. DocGo is at several of our HIRCs. And actually, our only HIRC in Brooklyn, which is the Brooklyn Cruise Terminal, is not SLS, it's DocGo. And, you know, I will say, in terms of the functions that we have at our sites, you know, some things that we started off in the beginning doing, we're doing more of now. We started off making sure that our staff were predominantly bilingual, now we're really maximizing that. So as you know, talk to our frontline staff, they're almost all bilingual. We're also seeing, as we've had, as we're getting influxes of people from buses, there's a need to have more staff to receive all of them at once. So we're right sizing our model every day now, literally every day, so that we can make sure that the functions are being completed by the most reasonable number of people with our vendors. And that's why at our HIRCs, we have a H&amp;H staff onsite or available 24/7 that's responsible for exactly what you're talking about.
Okay. Well, so the, but I guess my question is, how much is being spent at DocGo? So DocGo is at all of your sites? Is no SLS Co.?
SLS Co. at our sites is still at the Row Hotel. And the DocGo is at several of our sites. I can get back to you about, with the list of which sites DocGo is at, if you like.
Okay. And then just how much is being spent? Go ahead.
Yeah. The, SLS is also doing re-ticketing and some logistics support at the Port Authority bus terminal. The only thing I'd add to what Dr. Long said is, in terms of staffing, there are some things we're doing more of, some things that we're doing less of. But we don't have a crystal ball to be able to predict what's going to be happening day to day or week to week. There's no correlation of intakes based on the number of buses coming. We have to be prepared for what could happen in May, once the COVID emergency ends and ostensibly Title 42 ends. So a lot of those things, day to day, also adjust the staffing numbers at these different sites.
Okay. So when you send us the numbers, the information about who's where, will it include the numbers as to what you're paying the contract?
Yeah, and I can tell you that the SLS contract was registered at 135 million, of which we've paid to them as of the 27th of February, 8 million.
Okay. And how about DocGo?
On DocGo, we can get back to you about cost. To answer your gating question, SLS is currently at the Row and Walcott, and DocGo is at our other five HIRCs. And then we can get back to you about cost. The number we shared earlier, just to paint the larger picture for the HIRCs, is that the H&amp;H spend on the HIRCs through the end of January is $141 million.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just to chime in, I think the DHS model looks fairly different because we do have intake sites, right? So a lot of the initial services that Dr. Long referenced, right, are happening, those initial touchpoints are happening at PATH, at 30th Street.
And those are your staff?
Right. And, yeah, at PATH and 30th Street, our staff, Women's Intake is the only one that is contracted.
And Women is with the, one of these companies or a different company?
No, sorry, that's Help USA, it's a not-for-profit. But, but also just really want to piggyback off of what Commissioner Iskoll said, and this is something that DHS has lived for a long time, right, that we really, we have to plan for peak because, because of our legal and moral obligation to shelter people. So, you know, there are moments where it feels like, not enough moments, but sometimes there are moments where it feels like there are some extra resources. But because we are managing towards the peak times, right, whether it's census capacity, whether it's, you know, bed capacity for places to put people or staff, I'd say, right now, we're a pretty long way from planning for peak staff, but it is the reality that we all have to live because of the.
I got, I understand that. I mean, these contracts are massive, and it's more like at the Row or at the Walcott, people were nice, everybody, but this seemed like they were sitting at the table, maybe it's a lull time, I got it. But it's a lot of people. I'm just saying, there's a lot of people, and a lot of desks. And, okay, but focus on the food, you know, less on the desks. I mean it, you know, that would make, you'd find people much happier. Okay. Now, I don't understand this federal reimbursement, because you've got the 800 million, which out there somewhere, and then you've got an 8 million. And so I don't understand, it said the last year FEMA confirmed the 7.89 million has been awarded to the city through FEMA's emergency food program. But then there's also, there's, and I think that's out of the 8 million, but then there's 800 million. So explain to me what's going on with this reimbursement.
Yeah. So the 800 million for the emergency food and shelter program is federal funding that is national.
Right.
Right? So it goes, it is a reimbursement to nationally, not just to New York, not just to New York City, based on cost accrued, of which we've gotten less than 8 million in funding.
But people say, I'm just telling people, I'm not saying that they're right, that you, because you haven't submitted the receipts, because I assume you have 800 million dollars of receipts. My feeling in life is you submit everything, having done this for the city of New York under the Dinkins administration, and then you try to get the whole 800.
Well, what I will say is that OMB, ourselves, the administration, has been submitting the receipts. We have been working very closely with FEMA around this, and we will see what happens.
So so far, you've gotten eight for the receipts that you have submitted, but you have.
And just to be clear, we are competing with every other jurisdiction in this country, the southern border, Colorado, Illinois, Chicago, for the emergency food and shelter program. So it is, it is not like Congress passed 800 million dollars, it's supposed to be going to New York City or New York State.
But you have submitted receipts for more than 8 million?
That's correct.
Okay.[1722.87] Okay. And then what's the, and then, so the 7.89, is that what you're referring to? That's the same thing, I assume, as the eight million, close to it?
Yes.
Okay. And then there was another eight million that was available earlier? Was that something that you know about, or am I miss, miss?
I think we might be talking about the same pot of money. I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay. And then the other question I have is the folks who are at the cruise terminal, obviously they can't stay forever. What's going to happen to them?
So, yes, we, we have to shut down the cruise terminal once we get into cruise season. You know, as I've said, in this unprecedented emergency, one of the things when we set up, you know, and deal with setting up HIRCs, which are three dimensional puzzles, we have to solve for a variety of things with each and every one of them. One of the things that we have to solve for is use, right? Randall's Island was not available in September because of seasonal use. Brooklyn Cruise Terminal was not available in the fall because of seasonal use. Brooklyn Cruise Terminal will not be available after April, or starting in April, because of seasonal use of cruise ships coming in. So we're currently looking at other options. We're citing additional locations, and we will work with the individuals there to determine what the next best step, next best step is for them. And Dr. Long, anything to add to that?
No, I think you covered it.
Okay. In terms of DHS, I have a wonderful, as you probably know, Molly Park. The Hotel Newton has, I love the sergeant there. He's from Binghamton, New York. So how long is the National Guard going to stay? Will the governor keep them indefinitely? They do a great job. I think they're fabulous. They're bilingual. They're from New York State. They love this opportunity, et cetera.
Then couldn't agree with you more than.
Me and the sergeant are good friends now.
The National Guard has been a tremendous asset to the, to our operations. We really appreciate the state's engagement with us. And, you know, the individual guardsmen have been fantastic, engaging in the training that we've provided and working really closely with us. We don't have a specific end date on the National Guard. We work really closely with our state colleagues. And, and for right now, we're on status quo.
So that's, in a sense, it's an in-kind support, I would call it. Are you, they're charging us, or they're paying for the whole thing?
It's an, as of right now, it is an in-kind support.
Okay. So to me, you should keep it as long as possible and probably try to increase it. Are you asking for that? I love my nonprofits, but these guards are pretty cool.
We absolutely agree with you, Councilmember. Yes, we're working very closely with the state to make sure that we get as much of that resource as possible. You know, the guards have, they, they, we train them on DHS operations, but they have significant training obligations themselves. So they are cycling in and out. But, but yes, we're, we appreciate them and, and will continue.
I just want to add one thing to that on the National Guard. We, we have requested sort of continued additional support. The state has made a commitment of somewhere around a billion dollars to this program. They have not made clear yet exactly what that means and what that will look like in terms of the reimbursements and how we access that funding. It's also not clear as to whether the National Guard will or will not be included
In the billion.
in that commitment.
All right. So the, so about a billion commitment, but we're not clear if the in-kind contribution is part of it?
We're still working out all those details, correct.
But the state committed about a billion dollars. Okay. And then my final question is regarding just the DHS folks and how, I mean, you, you, how, what are you dealing with? If they have no money except for the perhaps insurance, many of them are working, however. I don't care what you say. They are working. And we help them work. You can't help them work, but we can help them work. And so how, is it possible that they could get other kinds of housing? How are you handling that? You have to pretend they're not working. That's fine. But, but they are working. So what is, how is that taking place?
So first of all, let me say that the administration has been very vocal, and we will continue to be vocal, and we appreciate.
Working papers.
in, in.
I miss working papers.
advocating for more work authorization because.
Yes, we know that, but it hasn't happened yet.
Agreed. The what benefits people are eligible for varies very specifically on the status of their immigration case. I think Dr. Long mentioned when people are on, on parole, which is the, the specific term of art here. They are, while they are on parole, they can be eligible for certain benefits. If that parole expires, they lose eligibility for those benefits. So we are certainly working with, with clients to connect them to anything for which they are eligible, but it is a very retail client by client analysis.
All right. Just finally, is there a difference in the cost for somebody at a HIRC shelter versus a DHS shelter? And is that something that you take into account?
Can you clarify the question?
No, no, I'm just saying if somebody's staying in a HIRC shelter, it's X cost per night, depending on the row, depending on the Walcott.
I mean, every single shelter, every single.
Versus DHS.
Every, every single HIRC has different costs as well. We target a per diem across the whole of government approach of around somewhere between 350 and 375. I think it's actually about 363 is the number for the per diem average, but that's for both systems.
All right. And how about DHS?
That, that, that's, that's an average for, for both systems.
For both of them?
Yeah.
All right. So.
And, and again, it's, it's, every single one of these locations has different costs. So it's, it's even looking at, you know, I don't want to speak for DHS, but even looking at the variety with the different 92 emergency shelters, the seven, eight total HIRCs, each one is, is completely different.
Right. Thank you, Madam Chair. And listen, food is your challenge. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Brewer. For the state aid, for $1 billion, is that, so that's currently being worked out for the next fiscal year with the state budget right now? Or is that for this, this existing?
To my knowledge, I have very little information about it.
Okay. But you are hearing that there may be $1 billion?
Correct.
Are we having any commitments for shelters opening up upstate outside of New York City? Or in Long Island or anywhere else? From the governor or state partners?
Not, not that I'm aware of, but I would have to defer to the team here.
Is that something we're advocating for?
We, we have had extensive conversations with the state advocating for a lot of help, and we have submitted through different systems that are used to request state support for emergencies for that type of help.
Okay. For the shelters for, that are run by DHS, we've gotten multiple phone calls from constituents who are shelter residents, who are migrants, refugees, asylum seeker status, about night raids from the shelter providers, where in DHS shelters, there seems to be no privacy, where you're not, you're not allowed to lock your room. The locks are completely removed, and there are no key cards, no nothing. Whereas in the HIRCs, you're able to have a key card and you can close and lock your door. And obviously, the shelter, the administrators can enter any room, but other residents can't just go in and like, go into your room. Can you help me understand what's going on with some of these shelters? Why they, they can't have any privacy?
Let me, thank you, Councilmember. Let me try and clarify the situation. So the shelter provider maintains access to individual rooms. Other clients in the shelter do not have access to people's rooms. We do do daily wellness checks. And if you, if particularly on the families with children side, if you have not signed in and out within a 24 hour period, we will knock and ultimately enter the room because we think it is really important to lay eyes on every family. That, you know, speaking not specifically to the, to the asylum sites, but, or the emergency sites, but across our system in general, doing that has averted tragedy more than once, right? It is important that we are engaging with families and that we know where people are, so that if there is a situation going on, that we can, we can engage. But there should not be a situation where other clients have access to one another's rooms. If you want to send me specific addresses, I'm happy to follow up on that.
I'll definitely be following up because my DHS shelters, they are not allowed to have any privacy. You can't lock the doors. Whereas in the, in the HIRC, they're, they have a car key, a key fob, just like any other hotels, that you have privacy. So in my DHS shelters, they've all been removed. So they're all open. And we continue to get reports and recordings of shelter providers in retaliation every time they come to my office, that they go in at night and take things from them, anything from clothes, toys, jackets. So we'll be sharing that information with you.
I just want to stand up in, in defense of the not-for-profit providers who have really stood up to do heroic work here. You know, while I certainly will investigate any instance of an individual shelter operator, individual staff person taking action that is inappropriate. I think overall, our providers are doing really heroic work. They do enter clients' rooms, but it is in the interest of wellness checks. And, and I will leave it at that.
I have no doubt that there are many providers who are doing that, but I seem to get reports of not such good ones. So I'm going to be following up so that you have records of them, and we can follow up together on those shelter providers, because I have very, I have very high concerns, because those things are circulating in my district to the public.
Absolutely happy to follow up.
Thank you. For the shelters, I think we've gone through most of the questions that we had. Could you help us understand the timeline for vendor selection in an emergency? Of how pricing is determined? Are all offers considered, or are certain offers rejected because of unreasonable costs? Can solicitations for emergency procurement include cost flexibility? This is more for MOX and DCASTs.
Yep. Hey, Trump. All right. Just trying to get it. Thank you, Councilmember. In terms of how the selection process occurs during an emergency, I would note, as the commissioners and Dr. Long have spoken to, that a variety of procurement vehicles have been used in order to respond to this emergency. In fact, almost all of the tools available to the city. So in each of those cases, there's going to be distinctions between the way that that, that that process is done. However, specific to emergency purchases, which of course have been utilized in, in this example, each agency is required to, to use as much competition as is practicable under the circumstances. And what we find in practice is that a variety of factors influence this, some of which have been spoken about, including vendor availability to level up to the need that is had, the availability of the goods or the, or, or the services in a very literal sense, which can be disturbed. And when it comes to price, of course, the ability to do something immediately is generally going to be more expensive. So all of those factors go into what, what, how a vendor will be selected and how those prices and negotiations will occur. To your question regarding are certain offers rejected due to unreasonable costs, or are all offers considered? Generally, under emergency procurement, no different than standard procurement, you would, you would not summarily dismiss, you know, one proposal or not. Price is going to be a factor. And depending on the selection method used, it would be different levels of factors. We've referenced in a competitive sealed bid, which has been utilized in part for this emergency, price is going to be the determining factor. Whereas in other RFPs, of course, that's not the case. And to your question regarding cost flexibility, could I ask, in terms of, is there a specific aspect of cost flexibility that you're referring to, or more generally?
Well, I'm asking mainly because I see such a wide range in food procurement for the same product.
So I think, again, in the, each individual negotiation will have different factors that will, that will affect the outcomes and will affect the way that it's gone. So certainly solicitations for emergency procurements can include, can, can include very different negotiations based off of the need that needs to be filled at the time. And I would also note, as, as, as Dr. Long and Commissioner Eschel have, have highlighted, these contracts have not stayed the same from the moment that they were signed. Those immediate pressures, those are not the exact same things that are being offered right now. However, that might not be immediately reflected in that kind of, you know, contract max.
How long will the declared state of emergency continue? And what happens to the emergency awards after emergency is declared over?
Thank you, Chair Juan. So a formal state of emergency, as in promulgated by the mayor or the governor, is not directly tethered to the emergency purchase, as we refer to it in the PBB rules. So there's a specific emergency declaration that is made that is not directly tethered to a state of emergency. So for example, as you know, emergency purchases are used almost every day of the week or every week in order to respond to relatively routine, so to speak, emergencies such as a wall falling down. An HBD immediately moves to secure the necessary services to stop it impacting another building right next door. Those are classic emergencies that happen all the time. And those are untethered to any, you know, formal gubernatorial or mayoral state of emergency. So in this case, DSS on behalf of all mayoral agencies submitted a, a declaration of emergency to the controller and the law department that was dated July 29th of 2022, declaring the state of emergency specific to the procurement. So that will last the entirety of the time for these procurements. So there's no, there's no question of gap.
Okay. And what happens when it's declared over? What happens to the existing procurement?
So the, the declaration of emergency, the, the, specific to the procurement, will last the entire length of the contract in order for it to be procured that way.
Oh, I see.
Because fundamentally, it is a, it's a source selection method.
Got it.
So if it's a three-year contract, it'll last that.
Okay. And can you explain DHS's 237 million contract with the H A NYC Foundation Incorporated to secure hotel site for asylum seekers? And how much has already been spent under this contract?
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm happy to take that one. So HANOC is the Hotel Association for New York City. We started working with them during COVID and have, have tapped back into them in this particular emergency. They are serving as a coordinating entity for, for sourcing and then paying hotels. So we work with them to identify hotels that can comply with our standards and operate the way we need to operate. And then they are responsible for managing the, the day-to-day invoicing and payment of those hotels. So the, the 275 million that you note, it is, that is actually funds that are largely being passed through directly to the hotels where services are actually being offered. The reason we do that is twofold. One, you know, we've had a 50% increase in shelter census with almost no increase in DHS staff. So we certainly need a way to manage the, the contracts effectively, and this helps with that. But, but much more importantly, because we are paying the hotels through the HANOC contract, it means that the not-for-profit providers, many of whom are fairly small organizations, don't have to take on that burden and don't have to take on the financial obligation of month-to-month payment of the hotels. With respect to how much has been spent so far, I'll need to get back to you on that one.
Okay. In November 2022, Governor Hochul announced that a total of $3 million will be administered over three years to provide free immigration legal services and assistance with critical application filings and required appearances. Has MOX received a copy of this procurement? And have city agencies like NISA or Moya considered duplicating some requirements on the procurement? And is the $3 million enough given to, for the magnitude of this asylum seeker crisis? And how would you recommend this funding be distributed in our city?
Moya has not received a copy of the procurement. However, we are aware of the state's $3 million expenditure. We don't believe that 3 million is enough to serve the immigration legal needs of 40,000 plus people. Taking Action NYC case rates at $480 apiece, you would be looking at more than 19 million. And the services that this population requires are, are greater than that. So we don't have a copy of the procurement. We have been in communication with the state, and we're actively talking about collaborations.
Okay. I assume nobody else, no one else has any more information on this?
No, I've got nothing, nothing to add beyond what Tom already said.
Okay. I guess we should all follow up. In the September council hearing, the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs testified that they are staffing their office with an additional 10 language access specialists to be better addressed for the need for translation interpretation. Right now, as we're going over the next upcoming budget, we know that Moya will also be affected by the pegs, and you'll be losing staff headcount. What mechanisms did administration put in place to facilitate the hiring of these 10 staffers at Moya?
Thank you, Councilmember. The positions are posted, and we are actively recruiting for the open positions. They, they can be tricky to fill because they are fairly technical. The language access specialist position, for example, makes recruitment especially challenging. So we've been actively interviewing and selecting candidates for hire. We've reached out to our vast CBO network, in which there are many people with multilingual capabilities. And we continue to work closely with OMB and all agency partners to onboard newly hired staff.
Okay. Great to hear that that's still moving forward. My last question is, I'm clearly a big fan of how the HIRCs are run, especially since I see such a contrast in what I hear from my constituents and the schools. But I'm wondering, why was the creation of HIRCs prioritized over investment in the existing shelter system when DHS is short-staffed? DHS needs more funding, and they already have such a large chunk of the shelters? Would, would expanding the existing shelter system, was that considered an option from the administration before deciding to open up the HIRCs?
I mean, I would argue with the opening of 90, look, I mean, you know, as we've said repeatedly, this is an unprecedented crisis. And I think in this unprecedented crisis, I would argue that the opening of 92 emergency shelters by DHS, especially when you consider on average, it takes them two years to open one, is an expansion of the shelter system. I would also say that, you know, when we opened, one of the things that the mayor and the administration sort of made clear is that we were going to have to take a whole-of-government approach to this. This could not just fall on the shoulders of any one agency. And so collectively, we are working together to meet this unprecedented challenge and emergency.
Thank you.
Can I, oh, actually, just to add on a few words there. Yeah, I think the, the, what Commissioner Eschel said about this being an unprecedented crisis is exactly right. There were times where we were receiving, you know, hundreds of asylum seekers coming into our city every day. And we needed, that was, as we said earlier, one of our main lessons so far of everything we've experienced, is the importance of an all, all-of-government approach and not just one agency or another that is, has the full responsibility of having to deal with a crisis of this magnitude, which we haven't seen before. So with, at H and H, we were proud to step up to be able to offer the HIRCs, which we designed to meet the needs of this crisis, to help the city overall. And I think the all-of-
And I think the all-of-government approach that we've had, working, you know, in lockstep, at every step of the process, has been, I would say, essential to the success we've had in helping so many asylum seekers so far.
Yeah, and I echo what my colleagues have said, right? The shelter system absolutely has expanded, right? We have 92 additional sites, we have brought in new providers, we have adapted our system in ways that a year ago we couldn't have contemplated. It put a significant tax on the organization, and we really have obligations for the 48, to the 48,000 clients that we have who are not asylum seekers. We want to take our responsibilities to both populations very seriously, so we are incredibly grateful to H&amp;H for the work that they have done and really applaud the whole-of-government approach that has been taken.
Chair One, I apologize for saying this. I think you might have been made aware, I see patients on Fridays, and I have to leave in a few minutes, so I just wanted to offer, if there are any critical questions, I'd really love to answer them now, and I'll leave my staff as well to
We're wrapping up. I think Councilmember Brewer just had one last question.
You're just back to the issue of the staffing and the SLS co- and doco. So, do you do an audit, just as you're doing with the food, which is appreciated? Some kind of an audit to see if you need this kind of staffing for this number of people? Just because we're trying not to waste money.
Yes, no, we absolutely do an audit on a, pretty much a daily basis. So, we not only have our staff that are directly overseeing, our, meaning H&amp;H staff, onsite at all of our SLS and doco sites that every day take a lay of the land, see what's needed, see how everything is going, then we have executive check-ins at every level as well. So, our staff, as you know from being at our sites, are deeply involved in the operations. And we've built out the model so that each aspect of the operations are overseen directly with H&amp;H staff. I think as we go forward, we're going to have more and more opportunity to continue to have our model evolve, and I welcome that. I mean, I think we've made a lot of really amazing changes at our HERCs, like, for example, being able to offer vaccines at the point of intake for all the children that haven't had the opportunity to receive these lifesaving vaccines before, and you can count on us continuing to do that moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much to everyone being here. Your collective, agency, citywide efforts for our migrants and refugee asylum seekers are seen with much gratitude and appreciation. And one last thing I want to just note for all of you, if we can all across the DHS and HERC shelters look out for our DOE registrations to go to public schools, because I am also getting notified of students ending up in our charter schools and then getting confused and coming back into our public school system, so if we could all work together on that, I would appreciate it. Thank you so much for your time, this meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone can go, but we have one public testimony.
If anybody signed up to testify in person today, please fill out a witness slip in the back, and we'll just pause a moment. Seeing no one here in person, we'll be calling virtual panelists. We'll be limiting that testimony to two minutes each, and please begin once the sergeant has started the timer. And yeah, again, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and give you a go-ahead to begin. And we are going to start right now with Alana Tornello.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, my name is Alana Tornello with the Human Services Council, a membership coalition of over 170 human services organizations in NYC. We urge the city to invest in long-term, community-driven care coordination, legal services, mental health services, housing, and more for people seeking asylum and other refuge. This calls for direct multi-year investments and exhausted human services infrastructure. City Council's announcement of the Welcome NYC campaign is a helpful start. Thank you for the advocacy, which should continue in order to extend funds for compassionate and continuous care for our newest neighbors on the long road ahead. As City Council noted in its December report, sustaining sanctuary long-term may also require legislation. We released a report in January from engagement with over 80 human services organizations committed to strangering communities, even while navigating an under-resourced landscape concurrent with COVID-19. We found that 96% provided services entirely or partially out of pocket, 40% were asked by government to provide services, less than 13% were offered complete funding for those partnerships, and nearly 20% reported that issues with scaling up operations were impacted by pre-existing unpaid work from government. Migrants, people, are not a crisis. New York City was already in crisis with forced cuts and closures of critical human services lifelines that impede how care is scaled up whenever there are rapid significant increases in need. With this in mind, we outline the following in our written testimony. Ensure all funds designated for this work contain direct expedited contracting for human services developed with and for community organizations. Fully cover accessibility for non-English speakers and people with disabilities. Include just pay and offer flexible deliverables with expedited payment, and disclose all contracting in the city's response to date. Invest now in long-term comprehensive human services, which include expanding navigation into sustained care management with a shared people-centered data management structure, significantly expanding and having multi-year legal representation, also to create an expansive community-based network of mental health providers offering trauma-informed, culturally-appropriate long-term care, long-term affordable housing solutions, and the distribution of accessible training. May I complete?
Yeah, go ahead, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Last, is to fund a public education campaign with community partners for New Yorkers to better understand the situation faced by their newest neighbors and mitigate stigma. To conclude, the city that prides itself as a sanctuary also struggles to equitably share resources with community leaders and providers who often make that sanctuary possible. Contracting directly with community organizations to expand services not only helps our newest neighbors, it strengthens support systems that New Yorkers already need. Thank you, and please refer to our written testimony and January report for detailed recommendations and supporting data.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Juan Calcutta.
Starting time.
Hello, thank you for coming on. My name is Juan Calcutta, and anyone with a brain knows that like the most important resources to send right now is sending to Ukraine. And I know that because my Latinx sister Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez keeps voting to send billions and billions of dollars to Ukraine, but I actually understand because I know it's important, and it's, right now, that's more important than her constituents in New York City. But that doesn't mean we can just ignore the current housing crisis with homeless people. But I was thinking we have a solution that kind of takes out, kills two birds and one stone. We can recruit them to fight for Ukraine, but hear me out. That's free healthcare because they're joining the military with these homeless people need jobs, so that would provide, what is a more honorable job than fighting Ukraine? And you want to talk about ending the war? There's not a more intimidating force in the world than New York City's homeless population. There's a reason I've been stabbed seven times in the last month. These crack-up hoppers do not mess around. And then I have this hat, Bin Laden sucks. And when I see Vladimir Putin, all I see is a clean-shaven Bin Laden with a slightly less child pornography. So, I'll end on this. This morning, in the subway, I saw a homeless person pooping into a pizza box. Let's send that intimidation to Vladimir Putin's doorstep. Let's figuratively poop in his pizza box and end the war in Ukraine, solve the housing crisis in New York City, and I think it's just a win-win all around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Alex Stein.
Starting time.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, hey, guys, I'm Primetime 99, Alex Stein, and this illegal immigration is, it's really bad, and so, I kind of wrote something for all the illegal immigrants out there. I just want to say, I want to help out all the Venezuelans. I'll do everything in my power to give them a free shower. I'll do it every hour. This is my number-one desire. We must provide these illegal immigrants a fire because they're smoking weed on the street.
Thank you, thank you.
What? No, no, I'm still talking.
Thank you very much.
Don't mess with my time. I'll find, I'll file a lawsuit against you guys. I'm Primetime 99. I'm Alex Stein, you can't shut me down, I got my time, I got my two minutes. So, listen, old lady, trying to be rude to me, I'm Primetime 99, I don't really like that. You're trying to, I'm trying to help these illegal immigrants, writing them a beautiful song, and you're out here trying to shut me down. You need to, you better back up, you better check yourself before we wreck ourselves metaphorically, because I'm a pimp on a blimp, and I'm the number-one town hall terror y'all ever done seen. And we've got this illegal immigration happening in our nation, I'm gonna play y'all like Playstation. Y'all best realize that I'm the biggest pimp on the biggest blimp. I'm Primetime with Alex Stein, every night, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, on YouTube, on Blaze TV. Like I said, I'm gonna solve this immigration in-the-nation problem myself, because why? NYC, y'all ain't doing it, but I'm doing it big time, Primetime, na na na, on a van, on a time, vanish, blow your mind, 60, na na na. You know this how we do it, and I'm gonna help out all the illegal immigrants by letting them vote, because I'm in the nightclub with Eric Adams. Me and Eric Adams, we're dancing, we're prancing, we're with nice models, we're going shaking, we're doing the freaky-deaky leg all night long, and you know what? I love it, because Eric Adams and I, we vibe. Listen, and I'll be honest, I take a lot of MBMA for, you know, medical research purposes. So, I like the vibe in the club because I'm Primetime, na na na. So, we're gonna help this illegal immigration, we're gonna vaccinate, listen, I got 17 vaccines.
Your time has expired.
Shake Shack?
Thank you very much for everybody who participated. This hearing is now concluded.